Do we want to discuss the calendar then first?
We can do that, I mean, we have time, right? It's a, it's seven thirty-three, so we could open our meeting.
And I could call home and find out exactly, but it's either the seventh, the sixth or the seventh, oh, yeah. The meeting would be on the seventh, the February meeting, huh?
Yeah, so we'll count on you not being there anyway for the, for the seventh, so let's figure out what works.
Let me open this up.
So we're not meeting December twentieth?
I could find, I can call and find out.
We're not, because I'll be in the air.
Right, and we don't have any new ones coming.
Okay.
Then, January third, we have our meeting.
Yep.
Everyone expect to be around January third?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And then the seventeenth?
The seventeenth, I would be away, and did someone else say they were gonna be away? Just me?
Just you.
Okay. So the set, so January has five weeks, do we want to just meet the twenty-fourth? Because then we would have another two weeks before our next meeting in February. Oh, Seth and Warren's not gonna be there for that meeting. I mean, we could add another meeting to January, I mean.
I mean, yeah, you could, you could either, I mean, you could do the seventeenth if we had something important come up, and then do the thirty-first, or just...
We could do the seventeenth, I just wouldn't be here, and so it would be, might be tricky to do it hybrid. We might just want to do an in-person meeting if we do that, only because...
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer because she looks things over.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Every day an hour, she looks at all this.
You'd rather, you'd rather have her look at stuff?
I would rather.
So then, and if we did it on the twenty-fourth, you're only back a day then, right?
I'm, I'm actually only out the sixteenth, ah, sorry, the seventeenth and the eighteenth, the sixteenth is the holiday. So I'm only out for those two days.
What is the dates of our cruise? I'm trying, we're trying to schedule meetings.
So I'm back in on the nineteenth, January.
Okay, is, I mean, does it, does it interfere with anybody else? Remember, you used to have the con, the conservation issue.
I need to do it sensitive, that's what I'm trying to do right now, and I can put it out there and just say, okay, these are the meetings I have, does anyone have any?
Within, within Town Hall?
Because ComCom doesn't meet here anymore.
Oh, okay.
Six to eighteen, that's what I told them, so.
All right, so, yeah, one, let's schedule the twenty-fourth then.
All right.
Don't schedule the seventeenth, schedule the twenty-fourth.
Okay, let's do the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, so that, that's, yeah, I'd be gone the sixth to the eighteenth.
Okay, so you're going, you, you'll miss that meeting, but I'll be here, so, on the seventh. Um, so we'll have to get, you know, two other people, and hopefully we won't have a...
Yeah, we have to make, well, that's why I want to put this out there.
No, no, I understand, I understand, so, yeah, let's, let's hold the meeting for the seventh.
Okay. And then the third week, I don't have a calendar, so I'll be...
That's, that's school vacation week.
That's school vacation, so...
Yeah, I'll be gone, and Chris will still be gone.
Yep, that's the week of the nineteenth, right?
What if we met on the twenty-eighth instead?
Of what?
Of February?
You'll be back, I'll be gone, but that's okay.
Oh, no, you'll still be, yeah, that's true.
David, you gonna be around on the twenty-eighth of February, as far as you know, right? Okay, so he's around.
Let's pencil those in then.
Okay.
Um...
And I'll check on the return date for sure.
Yeah, I will be around, Chris, I believe.
Okay.
We were reading your lips. Um, and then for March?
Well, as I say, also, if you had to, you could do the thirty-first of January meeting and, and goodbye that seventh meeting.
If we had to, like, yeah, if an A and R...
You could double up right there.
We could do that, the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first.
Yeah, then you...
I mean, if you had something, because if you don't have anything pressing, if, if we don't have anything pressing, we could even bail on one of those meetings.
Yeah, just cancel.
Yeah, I would do the middle of the month, I just cancel.
So you want, I'll schedule the room for the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first, and then we'll just wait and see what we get.
Yeah, and then cancel, cancel the thirty-first.
All right, okay.
And we might cancel, I mean, we could cancel the seventh too, if there's nothing really...
Well, as I say, if we, if we, if it's something that we could get done by the thirty-first, then we wouldn't need the seventh.
Right.
Right, right.
Maybe we should schedule the room for that night anyway, otherwise there could be like a whole month in between. So let's schedule the room.
For the three weeks in a row?
Yeah.
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 I know we're not gonna have three meetings in a row, but...
No, I understand. No, 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 that makes, no, that makes sense.
We've had to do it in the past, a long time ago.
A long time ago, Warren. A long time ago, when we said one o'clock.
We were meeting every single week for a while.
Yeah, and meetings went to one in the morning.
Three meetings and a workshop.
Yeah, and the meetings went to one in the morning.
The old days, huh?
Yeah, the old days. None of the youngsters know that, Debbie does though.
Okay, so tentative meeting on the...
You remember those, don't you, Deb?
I remember those four, five-hour meetings, oh, yes.
Time to forget.
Yeah, eleven, eleven-thirty, it's like this.
Yeah. Poor Debbie's writing away, she's on her fifth notebook, and...
So let's put in the seventh for now, and then...
The twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth. And then our, is March back to normal, or...
Well, March seventh, I don't, I'm, I gotta make sure when I'm coming back.
Okay.
We may be... The twenty-first.
I might be back on March...
The twenty-first should be fine.
I might be back on March sixth, I don't know when we're leaving New York. If we leave on, on Monday morning, I'm gonna be back for Tuesday meeting.
Let us know about March.
I'll probably be back at work Tuesday.
Let us know about March.
Yeah.
We know we'll at least be back to our normal schedule on the twenty-first.
Okay.
So we'll decide about the seventh.
Yeah, as long as I got June and February, it was starting to...
And then, of course, there's snow.
Oh, nice.
Well, and that's Warren, and you know...
You're gonna be on the bat.
But we, I, we've known Warren to pull in here with the front-end loader and stop in for a quick meeting, and then off he goes. Those times certain when we need full votes.
We put plows on today.
Did you call in from a plow last year one day? You did, didn't you? Didn't you call in to a meeting last year from, from a plow?
Yeah, there were some years that I've lived in that.
So, like, you called into the meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Like, from your, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't a real bad storm, but, yeah, you did call in.
Yeah, yeah.
I called in when it was violent.
Oh, Jeremiah says he's trying to get in.
Well, let him in.
I did not even notice that, I'm sorry.
You called in not too long ago when you were doing fireworks.
Yep, yeah.
Martha's Vineyard, Saturday.
Yeah, it was Martha's Vineyard, I think.
Yeah.
I think you were in a truck.
Yeah.
I gotta go now.
Yeah, that's right, I was.
All right, so...
I've done the best I can to make every meeting.
You do.
He does.
Thirty-one years.
The only time I don't make a meeting is when I'm sick.
And I'm happy that you don't make it.
What does that mean exactly?
Well, I was, I did one after...
Let's just say Debbie, everybody has had COVID, Debbie has not.
Oh, I know.
Probably felt so...
Oh, really?
Yeah, so all of you can just...
Good for you.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Dominic actually had it a few weeks ago.
Yeah, you were telling me, and you got it, and you didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
No, you've got, but you've got your shots, right?
Well, I got the bo, yeah, I got the shots.
And a booster?
I got, when I got it, I didn't get it, she didn't get it.
Yeah, nobody got it when I got sick. And I mean...
Selective little bugger, isn't it?
It is.
It is.
Well, I think, I think what happened was, is Jane had the Pfizer shots and the Moderna boosters.
That's what I did.
And I had all Moderna.
I had all Pfizer.
So there was something that maybe was missing in there that was protecting Jane and not me.
Yeah, maybe.
Even though it was the original shots, you know, so it was a long time ago.
I had all Pfizer.
Yeah.
You had all Pfizer.
And that's another thing, my wife had all Moderna.
Yeah, so...
So there you go.
It's, it's, you know, it's crazy.
Well, Dominic had Pfizer too, so...
And I'm gonna get my booster on, my, my, the new booster on Thursday.
Yeah, I've already had that.
Me too.
But I had, I...
All days.
When did you have it, after your, well, you had...
No, I had it about, about a month ago, I went into, to the VA and they both had flu shot.
Flu on one, well, that's what I'm doing Thursday too. I'm doing flu and, and Moderna.
And you have VAs.
All right.
And I know you want me to give a little Shay Lane up to you.
All right, this one.
So we don't want to do minutes?
Sure. Is, we have no Ryan. David, you want to unmute, so, and is, did you say, uh...
Jeremiah should be in, yeah.
Is he in?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay.
Yeah, you want me to, uh...
I think Warren, Warren, you want to read them? Warren, Warren's gotta move them, I just wanted to make sure we could hear you. You don't have to worry about turning yourself on and off. Because you are basically, you and Jeremiah are the only ones on Zoom, and Phil's the only one in the room, other than the four of us.
Well, I gotta log back into this, share file.
Oh, you want to see mine? Oh, David can move. David, do you have the minutes in front of you?
Be a little patient, I'll...
Yeah, I have, I have the minutes and I have the date, if you want me to just read.
Hey, go ahead, why don't you do it when Warren logs in?
Good. Mr. Hayden, if it pleases the Chair, I move that the Community Planning Commission approve the meeting minutes dated November first, two thousand twenty-two.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Pierce, any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Oh, you got a roll call.
Yeah, then, uh, aye.
Aye.
And a roll call, Jeremiah?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Myself, aye, four in favor, and Ryan is absent at the moment. Somebody want to do the next?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of...
The Committee on the Commission approve the meeting minutes dated November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I have a mo... I have a motion and a second by Mr. Pierce, is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and a roll call vote, Jeremiah?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Pierce, aye, Mr. Hayden is aye, and Ryan is absent. All right, one more.
Nope, that's it.
That's it, okay.
The VAs we got, though.
Danielle, you want to do those quick?
Um, yeah, sure. That's my folder.
Actually, um, only one of them is really... Want me to read this, Chris?
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Uh, continued virtual, virtual public hearing will be held by teleconference on Thursday, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM, under petition of Jeffrey Ga, Gannon, three Lindwood Ave, North Reading, Mass., possible ninety-seven, for special permit to raise chickens. The petitioner also requests a variance for the setback of the chicken coop. So this, this, um, I read this whole thing, it's fairly well done out, and I also like the fact that there's actually a, a picture showing where everything will go in relation to, uh, the other items on the, on the thing, so, um...
Yeah, it is interesting.
But, you know, well, it gives you, you know, I mean, it's a much better representation than we usually get.
Yeah, no, 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 I mean, that's great.
So, I mean, I mean, you know, obviously, you know, we would recommend no roosters, I mean, I think that's a given.
Yeah, that's a given right now, I think.
And, uh, but it looks, uh...
The, the only thing, you know, he's ten foot from the, from the line.
Well, the, the, for his chicken coop.
Yeah.
He's not ten feet from that, he's only four feet from the line.
Well, that's, I mean, he's, he's closer than ten feet from the line.
Yeah, he's closer than ten feet.
Otherwise, he would be, you know, that's just an exception.
But that's, but that's, I, in other words, I, I don't know if the ten-foot thing is, is a, is, um, I think it's a building code thing, not necessarily, uh, a chicken, you know, having to do with the fact that there's chickens, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a building code.
There is a fence, an existing fence there, and so I would probably, um, just say neighbors, you know.
Yeah, I have no problem with neighbors, no roosters.
Yeah, well...
I, I would just reiterate the no-rooster thing, because we've said that every time.
As long as there are no issues with neighbors, but, you know, of course, one would hope that they were on the, uh, uh, east side.
Yeah.
So the west wind blows in today, I'm not today, so...
Occasionally, it's gotta blow that way, hopefully, they'll be nice and contributes and makes to the...
It's just an observation.
Yeah.
Oh, the bad. We used to go up to Maine, and they used to have a big, huge barns.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they smell.
They're really big ones.
When you get a lot of them together, they, they ain't no fun.
I, I think the key to it, the key to raising chickens like this, and it, he's probably only gonna have a few, but, you know, it's most the maintenance of the, maintenance of the coop.
Yeah, cleaning the coop and, and making sure the yards are clean.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what my recommendation would be, Mr. Chairman, so, like that.
I agree with it.
Okay.
David, any recommendation?
Uh, I, I agree with you both, I, I, I don't have a problem with it, I do appreciate, there's a lot more detail than the typical VVA application, so that's really much appreciated, and, uh, but, you know, big fan of chickens, and same kind of, same, uh, warning there, neighbors, roosters, all that stuff, but, you know, it looks fine to me.
Aye.
Jeremiah?
Yeah, agreed, I'm pro-chicken.
Pro-chicken, anti-rooster?
Exactly. I even like roosters, but, you know, I think I gotta go with the flow here, not that again.
You want them waking up that newborn baby, right?
Oh, yeah, I do. Jeremiah's already up.
All right, we got, uh...
Want me to read this one too?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. The virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM, under petition of Jason Salter, three Shenandoah, North Reading, three, three, show, Shenandoah Drive, is it? Anyway, North Reading.
Yeah, I think it's Drive.
I think it is, North Reading, Mass., possible, uh, map four, possible one fifteen, for home occupation special permit for his handyman business per Article two hundred dash forty-two, North Reading zoning bylaws.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
And my quick comment on this one would just be that, that sounds like a pretty standard situation.
He just wants to get a check.
And I would just reference the bylaw.
I'm sorry, it sounds like a what situation?
Well, it sounds like a standard application, I just referenced the bylaw of the three hundred square feet, et cetera.
With inside the building, dedicated.
Because obviously, if they're home handyman, they're not gonna bring somebody's home back to their home, so...
No, but he could get, the problem with those guys is they grow.
Well, maybe, but again...
I never grew my business, so...
That's why I would reference the bylaw, because the bylaw references square footage, number of vehicles, et cetera, et cetera.
Exactly. David, any problem with that?
I'm in agreement, but same thing, you know, it's storage of materials and...
Yep.
Commercial vehicles, stuff like that, the typical stuff the VVA deals with.
Okay.
That's all.
Great, Jeremiah?
Yeah, same thing, same thing.
Great. All righty, so... Uh, it's not eight o'clock yet.
I can turn it off really quick.
Yeah, go ahead, why don't you, uh...
Yeah, so, um, well, Chris and I had spoken a little bit just to, about some updates for Shay Lane, and he just wanted me to give a quick update. Um, so there's nothing taking place right now that's an issue with the subdivision itself, everything is in compliance with the subdivision. The individual lot, though, Lot Nine, um, has started to put in the pickleball court that had been mentioned last year, um, and the Board of Health is actually taking some enforcement action now because of the quite substantial changes in grading that they have done, and to make sure that there's no negative impact to the septic system. So right now, I mean, certainly there are grading changes that will probably, you know, have negative impacts as far as, you know, stormwater, but potentially worse than that, because it could be affecting the septic system. So the Board of Health is, is taking action now on that, um, so I've been copied on some correspondence just back and forth. Um, I know Town Council is involved, um, so, um, I just wanted to update you on that, there's nothing really that we, I think, can or need to do about that.
The big impervious area, the valley.
Yes, of course.
The problem is, the problem is...
There's no storage for it.
Well, that's not, no, the problem is that it's on a private lot at this point.
Right.
And, and, and so the only people, you know, in order, you know, in other words, in order to, to object to it, you'd have to show harm. And the harm would have to be, um, you know, as a result of the work that they did.
Right.
And so that, that would have to be brought by a neighbor or somebody else, in the case of the Board of Health, if they figure it's harming the septic system, that's his door in.
Right.
You know, because he's, he's in charge of public health, and if it, if it creates a situation that could create a health situation, then he certainly has the right to get involved.
Which is, and he's doing the right, they're doing the right thing.
Yeah, yeah.
They're doing right, we're, our hands are tied, because it's a private, it's a private lot.
It's been a difficult situation from day one.
Basketball court, same thing, swimming pool, though they do hold some water.
I'm sorry?
The rain, the rain falls on a swimming pool, the swimming pool does hold that water if it's not already too full.
Sure. Um, okay, well, that wasn't for Shay Lane, um, as far as any other updates, I just wanted to let you know the MBTA Communities Action Plan has been submitted, the draft that we discussed last time, so we are right now in compliance. Um, in the meantime, over the past week, I would say, um, the state has actually released their compliance tool that we're supposed to use to enter in all of our information and, excuse me, determine whether we're actually compliant. It's gonna take us some months to get through the actual tool, and we may need some technical assistance, we may need some consulting help. I'd have to meet with our, you know, GIS coordinator, and I have to meet with, um, you know, whoever else may be involved in this. It's gonna be a long process, and I don't expect us to have it finished within a few months, but it's not due until, I mean, we've got just, you know, a year to put it together.
I have a question on the, I know, I know that our failure to do this could have, would affect, our, our failure to comply in whatever way we can would affect our ability to get, um, grants and so forth. Um, but do we have any grants in process that would be endangered?
Um, the ones that would be in danger if we didn't comply would be, uh, probably Mass Works, which, thank you. Um, we're, we've got Mass Works funding at different stages right now, we've got two awards that have already been made with, um, work already completed, so that one would be fine, but then there's the second Mass Works award related to the design of sewer, which is in the process of actually being awarded. So we definitely want to stay in compliance during that period, because we don't have any money yet. And then, looking to next year, or possibly the year after, it's possible we could be asking for...
More money.
Another, um, and then, I mean, there would be other grants that possibly we would want to apply for...
Housing grants are, are very effective, I think.
I'm sorry?
Housing money is very effective, if, if you all have the globe, there was like an article in Sunday's paper about it.
In Sunday's Globe?
Uh-huh. Some larger town is being affected big time, they have, uh, they have housing, affordable housing, and they're gonna lose like ninety thousand dollars or something, because they are not in compliance.
I didn't see which town, did you see which town it was? I'll look it up, I hadn't seen the article.
It's on one twenty-eight, it's a big, it's a big town, like Waltham, or I'm not sure, Watertown, maybe, something, something pretty big.
Saw this as not in compliance, oh, Hoover is losing their housing authority money this year. Oh, that was the other thing, we could have housing authority money.
So I'm gonna see, because of that article, I think there's gonna be a little more pushback on the, the, um...
To the, to the state, to, to give some variances.
Right, to do something different, I mean, these, these places, they have a housing authority because they have affordable housing, and they're losing money to take care of their affordable housing.
You know, it's interesting is...
It's kinda silly.
The actual communities were supposed to be the ones penalized for not complying, the housing authority is separate from the municipal government, so how are they punishing housing authority? I mean, it doesn't actually...
They try, they get money from the state.
Yeah, it's...
And they get money from the towns.
It's the casino gaming money.
Yeah.
Nobody mentioned is a big funding source of housing authorities, it wasn't mentioned in mention.
And they're taking that money away.
Yeah, so that happened to Hoover, and that's been a huge issue, I, that probably is what the article is about, but I didn't, I didn't...
I didn't read the, I, I read, like, most of it, I didn't read the whole thing.
But we're in compliance for now, we're safe at least for a year, actually.
I was gonna say a year, because they just came out with a tool, and if it takes that long to, to use, learn to use a tool, um...
Yeah, but our actual action plan isn't due for another year, so, I mean, our action plan is due, it's been suspended, the, um, actual finishing, the action, isn't, isn't, until another year. So, okay, so we're okay with that for now, um, for the ADUs, I have edits from the last discussion we had, I'll make those edits to our draft bylaw, and like, I can put it on the agenda either for January third or the next January meeting, but I can have that ready, I'll make sure to vet it first with Jerry before...
Yeah, go, go through Jerry first, make sure he's okay with all those changes, and then he can get it to us, so we can just hand it over at least, so we're familiar with it. Um, I, and, and then I think after we look at it and have another say-so on it, we've gotta send it off to the select board. I think it's the next place to go with that.
Yeah.
Maybe schedule a meeting together.
Yeah, maybe. After, after the March. We're not gonna be around, I'm not gonna be around.
That's true too, that's true too, that's okay, because we were gonna be targeting October, not June.
Yeah, right, right.
We do have time, and we'll probably want to have some public discussions, you know, in addition to the meetings. And, I think that's the major, oh, we already talked schedules, um, oh, I did just want to mention, um, I know we haven't brought this up in a long time, um, there was a grant-funded project looking at the feasibility of using Carpenter Drive, which we had the, we did most of the work last year and had a community meeting and everything, it hasn't moved forward, um, I think, I'm not really sure where the select board stands on it, I don't know if they know yet where they stand on it, so, um, I think the, the working group that we had, I think, um, at the, at the time, it said, you know, this group has really done as much work as we can do without taking it to the next level, but what we, what we do have is, we have soil testing, we have concept plans from DCI, we have a draft RFP that can be put out whenever we're ready, whenever, I guess, the select board is ready to kind of try to move forward on that, um, project. And all of it is, uh, needs to be compiled into a report to be submitted to the state, um, for our grant reporting. So that's due at the end of the month, so I'm pulling that together now, I just wanted to let you know about it. I'll put in all the, the record that we had of the, um, the community meeting, all of the questions that were asked and the comments that were given.
Is there any up, there's no updates on, basically what we saw is still, still valid, there's, there's no updates, changes on the, on the, um, on, you know, as a result of the soil testing or as a result of the, because, I mean, we've got a lot of pushback on that.
Um, on which aspect of it?
On the Carpenter Drive thing.
I'm sorry, we, we got...
Yeah, homeowners on the other side were, I, I don't understand, were they gonna have a problem with the water, we're complaining a lot about that.
I, I think it was maybe less an issue of concern about water and more about that access road, emergency access road that they wanted to, that the consultants were recommending we put through, parsonage, the parsonage person.
Yeah, we didn't want to do that, that's why that lot was saved, was because of the, the timber that's coming on that lot. You go and put a road in there, you're gonna take out fifty feet of it, or more.
Well, it was supposed to be like an emergency vehicle only area. I think, so the fire department isn't in favor of us having one way in and one way out from Carpenter at all. So I think that's actually probably the main sticking point right now.
Yeah.
So, um, anyway, there's obviously not a consensus on it, but we have all the materials, we have the consulting work that we paid for, we can always go ahead with an RFP when the town is ready to do it. I just wanted to let you know that, a project that's been cooking for, you know, two years, and I haven't mentioned it in a long time, but I'm pulling together the report, it'll be submitted, and I'll share it.
Yeah, it's quite interesting that the fire department said that, because they have plenty of places that have one way in, one way out, with lots more housing, and they didn't complain about that. I mean, that's a, that's a road there, Carpenter is a road, it's thirty feet, it's twenty-eight feet wide, it's a full road. It doesn't have to finish it, it's only a binder, but that's all we require, it's got drainage and all, everything else.
Right.
All we have to do is drive it through to the property, which is only fifty feet. and you put two driveways off of that, one going and one coming, I don't know why they have a problem with it, it's no different, no different than a lot of stuff that's on a dead end road, or access to the nursing home, which is one way in and one way out.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I mean, and that's.
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to bring them up and have them on the carpet and ask that question, because that doesn't make any sense.
I, I know what you mean, um, and then if it came in and there was actually a site plan review and we're going through it, I mean, you could still approve something, I think, um, it could be not with their recommendation, but you can still approve it, um, anyway. So that's where it stands now, um.
Oh, guess what?
It's eight o'clock.
That's perfect, you took right amount of time, being eight oh one, do we have a motion for that? Do we have?
Just to continue.
I don't know, continuance to January third at what time?
January, oh, actually, I think we do have a motion from, um, not a motion, a letter,